Monday, December 16th, 2019. Call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffey.
Here.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Present.
Wallstein.
Here.
And our guest councilperson, Adam Hoffman, is here.
Thank you.
Welcome to all of you that are here for various reasons this evening. It will be a long meeting, but I think that the main reasons are will be taken care of shortly. And if you care not to stick around for the balance of the meeting, you feel free to leave at any time. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council comments, questions? All those in favor of the agenda as presented, say yes.
Yes.
opposed? Agenda's approved as presented. Next item is approval of the November 25th, 2019 study session minutes and the December 2nd, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the minutes for November 25 and December 2nd.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as approval, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? November 25th and December 2nd minutes are approved. Brings us to presentation of some plaques and certificates of approval. And the first item is Tasha Burrell here. Or someone that would take her place. Ann Segerman and Chris Glazier. Will meet me up in the front. Chris, what's going on with you here? Chris, for your service on the Airport Commission, of which you've had to resign that position to be second ward councilperson. Here's a certificate of appreciation for your time served there. Well, we've appreciated it very much.
Thank you. I've appreciated the time that the committee let me be on this commission. I love flying and I love the airport.
Good, good. Ann, your service on the Utility Board of Trustees has come to an end by your choosing. You spend some more time with your family.
Yes.
And we certainly appreciate that. So on behalf of myself and the council, appreciation for all of your time served there and job well done.
Yes, it was a lot of exciting times with the broadband implemented, so I was really glad to be part of that.
Very good. Thank you. Very good, thank you. Tasha is not here, so we'll see to it that she gets her plaque. Next item, I believe Mr. Bronner has some things to take care of.
I do, as a matter of fact. Like to provide some plaques for the outgoing Mayor of council, Mayor Dean Soles. Join me, sir. City Waverly appreciates the dedicated service of Dean Soles as mayor, January 2nd, 2018
It's been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Waverly and may speak to it a little further towards the end of the council meeting. Thank you.
Next, how about Dan McKenzie? The city of Waverly appreciates the dedicated service of Dan McKenzie, second ward councilman, January 2nd, 2012 to December 31st, 2019. City Waverly appreciates the dedicated service of Edith Wallstein, as councilmember-at-large, January 22nd, 2014 to December 31st, 2019. To Mike Chair. The city of Waverly appreciates the dedicated service of Mike Chair, fourth ward councilmember, January 2nd, 2016 to December 31st, 2019.
Thank you, James. There's one other recognition that I believe the Fire Department wished to make.
Yes.
Denny?
Councilman McKenzie, would you come forward, please? For the past 30 years, I've known Dan McKenzie on the fire department. Dan has always been a volunteer of the community. He's always believed in the organizations and the causes of the community. And one of those causes that was very dear to his heart and means a lot to us was the fire department. Dan served for 33 years. In that 33 years, he held all of the positions in the fire department, including chief. In the last 10 years, he has been very instrumental in the training program for the Waverly Fire Department. And not only that, but Dan has spent countless hours going around the state of Iowa, training other fire departments, and also at the State Fire School in Ames. And so for your 33 years of recognition, Dan, we would like to present you with a plaque for your dedication and service to the Waverly Fire Department.
Dear service to the community, to the Fire Department, and to the city of Waverly, Dan, not only as a councilperson, but as a fireman, is very, very much appreciated by everyone. Moving on, we have some oaths of office to be administered, and Mr. Bronner will take
As mayor-elect, Adam Hoffman, come forward, please. Sir, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I am Hoffman.
I am Hoffman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of mayor.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, sir. Okay, I would ask Ms. Heather to vote for Mr. Matthew Schneider and Mr. Chris Glazier. Come forward, please. If you could see this, it would be innocent, so it would be nice. Start off individually and then we'll conclude the end here. Raise your right hand or extend your right finger. School star, I have to vote for.
I have to vote for.
I, Matthew Schneider.
I, Matthew Schneider.
I, Chris Glazier.
I, Chris Glazier.
And if you'll all repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office.
Discharge all duties of the office.
Of fourth ward councilmember.
Of fourth ward councilmember.
Of second ward councilmember.
A second ward councilmember.
Of councilmember-at-large.
Of councilmember-at-large.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, man. If I have Mr. John Johnson, please. Ms. Ann Henninger-Trucks. And Ms. Susan Vallow, come forward, please. It doesn't matter. All right, again, I'll start with you individually. I'm ready to finish in a minute. Let me get my... You hear from me? I'm doing my orders, that's the way I'm doing it. Hi, John Johnson.
Hi, John Johnson.
Hi, Ann Henninger-Trucks.
Hi, Ann Henninger-Trucks.
And hi, Susan.
Coche.
Thank you, Vallow. I'm going through it again. Thank you for that, Michael, please. So if you'll repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of hospital trustee.
Of hospital trustee.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
In the city of Waverly, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
We'll wait a few minutes to... He can get his regular chair. Okay, now that we've kept the serious business out of the road, we'll move on to the fun things of the balance of the council agenda. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $140,000 general obligation capital loan notes. I will open the public hearing for any comments from anyone that's here. Did we receive any written or oral comments?
We did not, Your Honor.
Very good, thank you. Anyone in the group, in the audience, that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-196 approving a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $140,000 general obligation capital loan notes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call, vote, please.
Okay, yes. Roll call, is it Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wallstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-196 is hereby approved. Companion resolution 19-197, a resolution approving incurring indebtedness with the First National Bank for the purchase of the Fitch property at 517 Third Street Southeast, Waverly, Iowa, and approving final closing statement. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19-197 approving incurring indebtedness with First National Bank for the purchase of the Fitch property at 517 Third Street Southeast, Waverly, Iowa, for the not-to-exceed amount of $135,000, and approving final closing statement.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion? This has to do with a house that the city purchased at the north end of the Oak Green Bridge on Third Street to facilitate future development and reconstruction of the bridge.
Well, I have asked this before. I'm still kind of curious, do we have an idea what the final disposal of the house will be? Is it going to be used? Is it going to be lost? What will we do with it?
Until we have to do anything with it, we'll try to rent it out, because it's perfectly good shape for that purpose. And then when we decide that we have to remove it, if we do, we will remove it either... Try to get somebody to buy it, maybe, and move it if we can. That would be our first preference.
Okay, thanks.
I do want to point out that if at any time we need to remove that house, we need to make sure that we're still in compliance with kind of the fair housing agreements that we signed regarding kind of affordable housing in the city of Waverly. Because I think this qualifies as affordable housing. So if we remove it from the books, we need to make sure that there's another equivalent housing put in somewhere else or something to that extent, as I recall?
We can look at that.
Okay. But I know that for some of those grants, the CDG grants that we applied for, there was some fair housing requirement. When you take low-income or moderate-income housing off the rolls, you have to make sure that there's some balancing. And I think this would qualify.
We'll make sure we do that before it's removed.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Wallstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Resolution 19-197 approving indebtedness with the First National Bank is hereby approved 7-0. Public comments for any item that's not on the agenda. If there are some, we would entertain them.
I bring a message from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So good evening, I'm Hank Feigleman, and I live in Waverly. I chair the Waverly Planning and Zoning Commission, and tonight, our commission wishes to recognize the contribution of Dr. Edith Wallstein, who has served as city council liaison as city council liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission since June of 2016. Edie was no stranger to the work of planning and zoning. She had been a P&amp;Z commissioner before joining city council, and she brought a body of knowledge to our meetings that has proved helpful in her position as city council liaison. Planning and zoning is a recommending, not a determining body. Our actions are guided by the state of Iowa code and the city of Waverly code. Because we recommend, it is our responsibility to bring everything related to a particular petition to the top of the table. And as a result, our public hearings tend to go a bit more, a little longer in length. Edie brought skill, experience, and patience to our meetings. More than once, prior to a vote, I would turn to Edie and ask, have we covered it? Edie, we will miss your expertise, your intellect, your caring, and most especially, we'll miss your smile. Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Addy, Ward 2. I think I should probably apologize in advance for any damage I did to the door on my way in. Second of all, I wanted to give a special thanks to our hospital board of trustees that were sworn in this evening. Susan and John represent consistent leadership for over 30 years of the hospital. If it's happened good at the health system, they've had a part of it, and we are all the benefactors of their leadership for six total decades, okay? My job is made easier and all of our health is made better because of what they've done and what they've been able to provide for this community, and we are very thankful that they've continued. Ann has already dug in. She has already tried to learn, and I want you all to know that while we will miss Gloria, we believe that Ann is going to hit the ground running and is going to work just as hard to ensure that we have a healthy health system to serve you all. Now, to the outgoing council members, I want you to know, I very much appreciate all of your support, your hard work, and the confidence that you've given me to do my job. We have a better health system because of everything that you've done as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Tab Ray. I'm happily retired. I want to thank the outgoing council for their service. You did a good job with many challenges. I think this council had a good working relationship with city staff, and I hope that continues with the new council. As staff, we appreciate the preparedness at the council meetings, and obviously, you folks read the packets and had questions ready to ask. Those questions would, more than likely, they would, the council would sometimes call us during off-hours if they had questions, and then they would get the answer, or at least they'd get an answer of, we try to find the answer before the meeting type thing. We really appreciate that. We think that's a healthy staff-council relationship, and that you can call us for questions anytime. In the mayor's case, he just walked down the hall and came into the office and just started asking questions. I wish good luck to the new incoming council, and hopefully, good working relationship continues. Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and council, and Matthew Snyder, Waverly resident, and I first want to thank the outgoing council. I'd like to, well, let me start with some verbiage from our smart growth policy. This is our, excuse me, our 2011 comprehensive land use plan that calls for transportation, diversity, efficiency, transparency, consistency, and community character. Community character says the city of Waverly will maintain and improve whenever possible the quality of life or sense of place that the residents of the community value and enjoy. Implementation priorities say that we should be creating a multimodal transportation complete streets network. Transportation diversity says we should consider and implement transportation options that maximize mobility, reduce congestion, conserve fuel, and improve air quality. Waverly's neighborhoods should be connected with pedestrian and bicycle network improvements to reduce the dependency on automobiles. What the DOT did to Bremer Avenue doesn't really achieve these objectives, and in fact, it is counter to these objectives. The DOT didn't even look or consider our neighborhoods. What we should consider instead of diversion in our neighborhoods due to road diets is a common sense approach with community input. One alternative could be a network of bicycle boulevards. And I brought handouts. A bicycle boulevard is also known as a neighborhood greenway. It's a low-speed, low-volume, usually use a collector's street or minor arterial. And instead of buffer zones that dangerously encourage bikes where we really don't want them, we use lower-volume streets that run parallel to Bremer and optimize them for bicycle traffic. A bicycle boulevard features big stencils, as you can see there. It kind of mirrors the stop stencils, so it gives the perception that you should slow down and there's bikes around. There's also on the back of that some wayfinding signage, which can obviously be customized to your community and can really add character into a community. You can also do traffic taming and calming features, obviously, with input from fire response and sign off on fire code officer. Bike boulevards tell cyclists that they are welcome here while telling motorists that cyclists have priorities on the street. This encourages traffic to drive with awareness of their surroundings while encouraging the motorists onto arterials like Bremer, where the businesses want them and where they belong. Bike boulevards are relatively new in the United States. Communities such as Berkeley, St. Louis Abyspo across Wisconsin has them, and the communities love them there. Bike boulevards are one idea, and they're just an idea, that would give Waverly character and a sense of place. And it seems to align with everything that's in our policy. They're also inexpensive to implement, and if it's just paint, so if it doesn't work, we can paint it back. We do need to get cyclists and motors on the same page of, on the same page as far as laws go, which is why I was pushing for a review, and will continue to push for implementation of cyclist laws similar to what Iowa City did. So I think that's something that we can be talking about in the coming months even, before bike season starts. We should also be talking about a sidewalk program. I've heard Councilman Drinkow, I think, bring it up 10 times now. I'll make it number 11. We need a well-thought-out sidewalk program that connects our neighborhoods as well as a reasonable maintenance program, which I know we have. Finally, I want to leave you with a quote from Jane Jacobs. Jane is the author of The Death and Life of Great American Cities. Ms. Jacobs observed that radically altering transportation networks within a city and doing urban renewal had very negative impacts when stakeholders of the community were not listened to. Jane said, and I quote, "Cities have the capability of providing something for everybody only because and only when they are created by everybody." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else has words of wisdom? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a twice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the East Bremer Avenue sanitary sewer extension 2019 for the amount of $1,293.04. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Business 218 North resurfacing 2020 for the amount of $1,797.32. Pay request from WHKS and Company for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for the amount of $777.11. Pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 10th Street Southwest improvements 2020 for the amount of $20,791. Pay request from Snyder and Associates for the 4th Street Southwest reconstruction 2020 for the amount of $18,864.48. Pay request from VJ Engineering for the Cedar Lane reconstruction 2019 for the amount of $2,381.25. Pay request from Impact 7G for the Airport Obstruction Removal Project 2020 for the amount of $1,690. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the 20th Street Northwest improvements 2020 for the amount of $4,278.70. Pay request from Midland GIS Solutions for the GIS data collection 2019 for the amount of $40,000. Pay request from Stegge Construction Incorporated for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building project for the amount of $168,875.00 to be paid by the Waverly Senior Housing. Pay request from AHDS Architects for the Waverly Senior Housing 420 Building project for the amount of $3,006.48 to be paid by the Waverly Senior Housing. A Class B native wine permit for teat nursery. Class C liquor license for the Big Ben Poorhouse and the cash disbursements for November 2019. We would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
I had one question on the cash disbursements. I don't want to separate it out, but there were a bunch of references to temporary easement and bonus. I assume it has something to do with the 4th Street Southwest construction.
We're paying for easements on adjoining property.
Okay.
Because we'll be disturbing the yards and we'll be restoring them. They're not very big, and each one of them is not very big.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the consent calendar is presented, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Consent calendar is hereby approved. Regular business, appointment of fire chief for 2020. And I'm not sure, you think it's Mr. Hopple? That's correct. I would move, entertain a motion to approve Dennis Hopple as the fire chief for 2020.
I move approval of Dennis Hopple as the fire chief for 2020.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion.
Do we need to approve all of the officers that are on the list, or only the, only the chief?
Yeah. Other officers will be sworn in at a later date, typically at the fire station. Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of Dennis Hopple as fire chief for 2020, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hopple, for continuing the work that you're already doing.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, resolution 19-198, resolution approving media plan proposals from Ambridge Marketing for implements, implementation of the community marketing plan.
I will move approval of resolution 19-198 approving media plan proposals from Ambridge Marketing of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for implementation of the community marketing plan for the not to exceed amount of $60,000.
Your second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Connie Tolan is here to give us an update, a brief introduction as to what we're going to spend money for.
Good evening. I'm Connie Tolan, economic development specialist. The action before you tonight is a request to approve a media plan proposal from Ambridge Marketing for implementation of the community marketing plan. As a review, the primary purpose of the community marketing plan is to assist in the recruitment of new workers to fill jobs in the community as well as to attract new residents. Secondary goals are to attract business investment and tourism. I'll give a brief review of the timeline of this project thus far. Back in April 2018, the city contracted with Ambridge Marketing for a community branding initiative. The purpose of that initiative was to identify a community branding identity for Waverly. Through personal interviews and online surveys, the voices of 225 individuals in the community and surrounding area were heard, and the brand identity was delivered in August of 2018. In November of 2018, the city took the next step and contracted with Ambridge for development of a community marketing plan. This plan included a theme that effectively communicates Waverly's brand, a strategy to introduce the branded materials and messaging to each stakeholder segment, recommended communication channels to be utilized, and a timeline and budget to carry out the plan. The community marketing plan was presented in April of 2019 with a recommended budget of $123,190 to build the tools and implement the plan. On July 1st of 2019, the city contracted with Ambridge for website design and marketing plan production. These were the first steps in implementing the marketing plan. That contract included design of a website, which will be central to the marketing initiative. It also included other elements of marketing tool development, including landing page development, community and testimonial videos, a brand style guide, brochure design, multimedia press release, and monthly content calendar development for social media. The budget associated with that part of the plan was $60,000. Development of these tools is well underway and is progressing according to schedule. We had the opportunity last Tuesday morning to present to the Economic Development Commission the tools we have developed so far. We showed them the website design, the brochure, one of the landing pages, and one of the testimonials that will be used in the digital marketing portion of the plan. Three city council members were able to join us for that presentation, council members Drinkow, Bergen, and McKenzie. Feedback received during, and particularly since, the meeting has been very positive. Implementation of the media plan is anticipated to begin in March of 2020, which brings us to the action before you tonight, which is to approve the contract with Ambridge Marketing for the media plan to set the marketing plan in motion. You have before you a detailed media plan proposed by Ambridge Marketing. They have recommended a media plan based on the budget guidelines we provided. The media recommendations include both online and offline or traditional media outlets to run from March through August 2020, which are the months during which people are most likely consider a new job or a move. The online media campaign budget will be divided between Facebook, Instagram, Google Display and Re-marketing, and Google Search and Re-marketing. The recommended online media budget is $22,800. And details of the plan in terms of target audience and how we plan to reach them are provided in your packet, so I won't go through that in detail. The digital ad production associated with creating those online ads is detailed on page six of your proposal, and that has a budget figure of $2,160. The offline media campaign is to propose to be 80% cable TV advertising and 20% OTT, which stands for over-the-top. And this refers to streaming platforms such as Smart TVs, Roku, Sling, and others. The recommendation for the offline media budget is $25,000. And details of the networks, the time slots, reach, and frequency are provided in your proposal. So, the request before you tonight is a total budget associated with the media plan of In addition to the media placements, we will be printing brochures and creating other marketing materials. We'll also have some costs associated with a launch event, which we're hoping to be ready to have in February, and for the creation of some HR employer toolkits, as a part, a large part of this plan is providing these tools to our employers as recruitment tools. So, the total budget request for this evening is amount not to exceed $60,000, which encompasses all the things I just walked through. And the source of funds is presented as being the Business Park Project Fund. Do you have any questions?
I'm just wondering if our, I mean, it sounds like from a calendar point of view, timeline, that we're progressing like we had planned or thought originally. How about budget-wise? Are we spending the amount of money that we had planned originally, or does it look like we are going to be spending more?
We have no indications that we'll be over budget at all. Nope. We're tracking very closely to what we, what we had planned.
I know it's not directly germane to this topic, but I guess, given that this is my last opportunity to say this in this seat, I just want to express again, as I've done during budget discussions, and I know they're not mutually exclusive, but with limited resources, I think one has to make, you know, sometimes some decisions of one thing over another and prioritize. And I guess I just want to say that I do still believe we need a city staff person who has a primary responsibility for communications. We don't have that currently, and I think that's needed, and it's related to something like this. It wouldn't be exclusive to these kinds of responsibilities or activities that we're developing with Ambridge, but would hopefully encompass more than that. But I still, I still feel pretty strongly that we need a position like that or a part of a position that has that on the front burner of their responsibilities.
So this is going to fund advertising, basically, for that six-month period?
That is correct.
And how are we going to track whether it works?
Yeah, that's a very good question. And when you look through the detailed proposal from Ambridge, it talks about all the, all the elements that they will be tracking through this campaign for us in quite a bit of detail, especially the online component. I can walk through those if you want me to look those up, but there is so much that they can track through those campaigns in terms of engagement. We'll be putting the advertisements out there, and they'll be able to identify how many clicks they get, so what engagement there. Also, some demographics about the individuals who click on those. From there, if they click on one of the ads, we have, they have three campaign topics identified for us, and the first one will be recruitment for jobs. So if a person clicks on that, let's say you're on Facebook and you click on that ad, it will take you to a landing page. And the landing page, if you're not familiar with that, is a very simple, one-page website, if you will, designed to take away clutter and to promote action. So if you click on that, you're going to have the option of seeing a video, a testimonial video, from someone in Waverly who talks about the job opportunities here. You'll be able to click on a box that will take you to our job site and actually view all the jobs that are available. From there, you can apply for them if you'd like, or there's the opportunity to sign up for a relocation guide, which we will send electronically, or the option to provide you with your email address. you with your email address and contact information so that we can stay in contact with you. So obviously, all of those actions are tracked and will be reported back to us. We'll repeat that process with a campaign related to relocation and also a campaign related to recreation. And so again, we have the ability to do a lot of tracking through the online.
Connie, if it's kind of the measurement page that you're referring to, I read through that, and I, you know, I agree with everything that you're saying, and it's necessary to do this kind of tracking, but I guess I would quibble just a little bit with saying that that's, as they say in the paragraph, "We measure the success of each campaign via these impressions." That's part of the story, but I think our real ultimate goal is to see how that translates into success in actually recruiting people to Waverly, whether it's companies or individuals. So I hope that we're including something about that that we can compare, you know, before we made these changes, to our marketing and webpage and all of those, and social media and all of that, that, you know, we actually, I know it's hard to do, but it would be good if we tried to show a causal relationship, or at least a correlation, between implementing this and seeing the real results, not just of impressions, which are important to track, but also real people actually, you know, more people coming to Waverly.
Exactly, exactly. And I should mention also that if they click on the job site, we have analytics there, so we know if people are actually looking at jobs. And also, when we have the rollout event, one of the things we will be stressing to our employers is that we would like them to maybe do some tracking in their businesses. You know, some employers ask, "Where did you learn about this job?" And if they're willing to add those questions to their applications or add that to their interview process, we'll be asking them to help us as well to track some of this.
And who will be, will it be you answering the people's inquiries unless it's a direct link to the job?
At this point, it will be our office, so Paige and I.
So Connie, what we're looking at is, deals with method and process. What do we know about content? Do we know what we're actually going to say in these ads, or is that to come later? I'm still waiting to find out what our new brand is going to be.
Okay, yes. Well, we were able to reveal that to the Economic Development Commission to good feedback. You know, we still would like to not broadly put that out there until we have the brand reveal event, simply because a brand or a logo as a standalone doesn't say much, really. It's all about the energy and the messaging that you have behind it. So we want to do it the proper way. We have had a Waverly team working with Ambridge throughout this whole process, validating what they've come up with to the best of our ability, to make some judgments about whether it will be effective in attracting the right demographic to our community, and so we will put that out there. Now, part of tracking your results is if a campaign does not seem to be successful, does not seem to be attracting the action that you're hoping, then that's where you make changes. And so we will have to be diligent about that and making sure that we're looking at those results and making changes if we think that is necessary, but as of now, I can say that everyone on our committee feels very positive about the messaging that's being put together.
So things are in the works. We just have to wait to see what it is.
Right.
I can wait. Just ask.
But you know what? If anyone wants to sit down with me individually, I would be absolutely happy to share with you that information and the information that we presented to the Economic Development Commission. It would absolutely be my pleasure to do that. I'd rather not just put it out here right now without that messaging behind it. Okay?
So is that something that's going to get monitored, like after two months of the program, if it's not catching on, that they can tweak it and that's part of this?
Absolutely.
Or they're going to pay them, that they'll change it?
Absolutely.
So I'd like to know more about the creation of the employer HR toolkits. So I mean, I felt like there was a lot about the media side of this, but there wasn't a whole lot on those employer toolkits, and to me, that seems like most important, that I mean, we want to put tools in the hands of our employers, like how can we help them recruit employees? So I'd like to know more about that side of it.
Exactly. So that will be pretty much making the tools that we have created available to them. So we will be providing them with printed brochures. We will also print them, provide them with the PDF from which they can print brochures, or they can send links to prospective employees, or they can link on their website. We will also provide links to the website for this campaign, which is really going to be central to the initiative, and so that, again, they can pull any information from that website, we hope they will link to that website. So for the most part, those are the tools that we will be giving them, so that they can use these tools to augment what they're doing in terms of selling their company and their career opportunities.
I think having the opportunity to kind of get this sneak peek at this, I'm very impressed with the work that's been done to this point, and I think the thing that may have surprised me a little bit, because I didn't know what to expect, was, you know, you think about a website, or you do social media, that type of thing, at least in my job, you want to present facts, you want to give them answers, and what I walked away with, this is really making an emotional impact with folks. It was selling Waverly as something they should check out, and it was done in such a way that you almost felt drawn in to do it. It wasn't, oh, I've got to click three clicks to get to the next thing. It was, no, emotionally, I'm already attached to this by that landing page, and they're giving me more. And again, I think that's what the campaign is doing, is employers will have to sell their job. We, as a community, need to sell the community that you can not only get a good-paying job here. The Economic Development Commission was key in addressing housing. So again, I think we got feedback through that group that we were successful in addressing housing. I think we'll get feedback through those business leaders that are part of that, that this campaign is working. So I think there's definitely a tie there. I think, to me, it achieved what I think was meant to be. I had an emotional attachment to finding out more about Waverly.
Thank you. Is it going to be marketed out of state throughout the Midwest or just in Northeast?
Yeah, as indicated in your packet, they did indicate the geographical area. We're going to begin in-state, in pretty much the northwest quadrant plus the larger population centers.
Northeast quadrant.
Sorry, northeast, northeast. Yes, northeast. And basically, because of limited budget, we want to focus our efforts where we think we could have the best bang for our buck initially, and so we're staying within the state at this point in time.
On Page 2, our list of the counties.
Yeah, I saw that.
Northeast quadrant is really like just a, it's a fairly large chunk. It's from 35, east of 35 and north of 80. It's a pretty good chunk of Iowa.
Yeah, I think it's like a third of the counties or something.
Okay.
And it does include a little reach into the bigger metropolitan areas like Des Moines and those type of things for folks that are tired of the hustle and bustle of the big cities.
Any other questions, comments for Connie?
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Connie. Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kingas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Lozne?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Dranko?
Yes.
Resolution 19-198 approving the media plan with Ambridge Marketing of Cedar Falls, Iowa is hereby approved. Resolution 19-199, a resolution approving changes to the Wellness Center Development and Use Agreement between the City of Waverly and Warburg College. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 19-199, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made in second. Council discussion. See, Mr. Segerman is here from War, from the W. Have any questions for him?
Sheila and I are here, and we're just here to answer questions.
Okay. I just want to confirm, Garrett can probably do this. There are certain programs that are not associated with this agreement, such as the youth baseball and softball, the soccer programs, the swim team. Those are all privately-run programs with their own associations that are not city recreation programs that are being run by the W. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are correct.
Are there any others you can think of off the top of your head that would fit into that category?
Golf.
Junior golf.
Junior golf. Junior golf would be one, but yeah, other than that, I think you hit them all.
Wow.
Good job.
Okay, good.
So it seems like the only two changes to the agreement are spelling out specifically the days off in like Section 2, and then changing the kind of, there's no longer the board of the W, and now they're just going to present to us once a year. So that Section 6 is the other place there's a change, but just those two, everything else is staying the same.
Correct. Yep, just those two sections are on those two pages. And what it is, is instead of the advisory board, it'll still be a presentation to the Leisure Services Commission by the W, and then if the council requests another presentation, then they will present that to the council, the same thing that was presented to the Leisure Services Commission.
I think that was kind of the point of my comment, was I like the fact that the change was made to the agreement that we still would receive reports from the W because there's an interest in the city. Even though we no longer are making financial payments, there's an interest in the city because the W basically runs our rec programs.
Correct.
And we need to know that those are being, you know, that they're active and that they're being well-managed and that people are participating and there aren't any issues. So I think having that annual report, both to Leisure Services and to the council, I think is still very important, and I would recommend that that report made to the council in addition to Leisure Services.
Yep, absolutely. And just to add to that, too, for instance, flag football through the W, they still, you know, they use our fields as well. We take care of all of that still, so yeah, we're still looking, you know, for that presentation.
I think also to make sure that wellness opportunities are available for people of all ages and all income levels at the W, you know? So I think it's good for us to keep getting reports and for Leisure Services also.
Well, having served on the board for the W, the board that is being phased out, I just want to say that I'm really impressed with Sheila's work, and I'm glad she's in charge of the W. I think the place is in really good hands.
I guess I'm hesitant about a change on this, simply, yes, we're no longer making any financial contributions directly to the board, to the W, but we did invest a significant amount of money upfront and in the first six, eight years of the W. And so I know when I first came on council, that was a very sore subject with a number of members of the community. And with pretty much every organization that we have given money to, or we give money to every year, we have the policy that we keep a representative with them to, as part of their boards. And I'm just really hesitant to pull back from that without having at least somebody to have a voice to say something, even if it's twice-a-year meetings that they might have, just to keep that presence there more than simply they come and tell us what's happening at the W. There's no chance for direct feedback and any kind of instant type of thing if it's a once-a-year type of appearance before the city council. So I'm just, I'm really hesitant about pulling back on that right now.
Would you feel good about a council liaison who'd go and have coffee with Sheila months a month?
No, because it's not a formal type of situation. That's, you know, it's, it'd be kind of like saying, well, you know, heritage days, we should only have, you know, somebody just show up occasionally. It's just, we gave quite a bit of money. The city was quite heavily invested in that construction and with them taking over the recreation programs, that I think there needs to be more than just a yearly report from the city or to the city.
Rich, you have something?
Yeah, if you'd allow me to respond, I appreciate it. First of all, thanks for allowing us to be here. Rich Segerman from Warburg College and Sheila Kittleson also from Warburg College. And Tim, you're absolutely correct. But remember, the advisory council was simply that. They were, they were just an advisory council. I think it was challenged to try to find people to serve on it because they felt like there wasn't, that's all they were, was an advisory council. There really wasn't anything that they were doing in effect. So in spirit, I don't think this really changes much. We're going to go, we work closely with the city already. We have a self-interest as well to make sure that we're running quality programs because the revenues that are generated from there still flow back through Warburg College. So this really just makes it so that we're working through the Leisure Commission and reporting back to them, and they can have that opportunity, provide feedback and, you know, and input and whatnot, and then again, if desired and requested, we'll come back to the city council and provide a similar kind of report.
But that's only a once-a-year, is what it, the way I read it, it said is once a year. And so if there are issues, it's kind of like, well, we've already reported this year. We're not obligated to come back for another year before to even talk about something if there is an issue, and that, to me, is just kind of, just a little bit, I'd like to have a little bit more oversight, I guess, from a city standpoint. And I don't have a problem if we were to connect it with the Leisure Services Commission and have a Leisure Services Commissioner as that representative, even if it's not necessarily a city council liaison, but have, you know, or Garrett as part of that, just as a regular kind of oversight or kind of connection.
I guess I'd have to agree with Tim on this, because when I read this initially, and that's why I made those earlier comments, and I'm, you know, the money part is, that part of the agreement is done, so we don't have the money in there. But I guess I'm a little concerned because we still have a responsibility as a city to make sure that we have adequate recreational opportunities for our citizens, and we're giving that up to the W. Not that I don't trust the W to do this correctly, but it's still our responsibility as a city. And if the only oversight we have is a once-a-year report to the Leisure Services Department, I'm not sure that's really adequate oversight on our part. I think I would like to see something with a little bit more oversight responsibility, whether that be kind of a reconfiguration of the advisory committee that maybe meets quarterly or something like that, or a more active coordination with Leisure Services. But I want to make sure that our responsibility as a city to provide those services is being, there's somebody to make sure from the city's standpoint that those are being met.
So practically speaking, what kind of oversight is happening right now, and what kind of communication, and how frequently do you, to the staff, and I don't even, is there a board of directors for the W?
The advisory committee that exists now meets periodically, and, but that's all they are, is an advisory committee, and I think that the mayor had approached us before and said, "It's difficult to get people to serve on the advisory committee because they're really not doing anything."
Doing anything.
It seems to me that the tying it to a city commission and office provides more formal connection and structure.
Than there would be now.
Than we have now.
But I think something more than just an annual report to Leisure Services. I'd like there to be a, some kind of coordination between Leisure Services, of more open communication back and forth.
What kind of communication happens now?
Well, I mean, we do the, I honestly do an annual update, but if, and I'm not opposed to this, and I don't, I do see some value to it. I just feel, you know, I agree, you know, with the mayor that the value to that committee really wasn't there anymore, so, you know, if there is more direction for us as to, you know, what that would look like, so we can see and everybody would feel that there's more value to it, I'm not opposed to it. I mean, at where we were, I just don't feel like it was really adding any value, and people weren't that interested in serving them. any value and people weren't that interested in serving on that committee. So, you know, if we can relook at that and see if there's a better way to do that, I'm definitely open to that.
So like
Even something that's, like Rod said, that maybe even a quarterly one that's as each seasonal set of programming is coming around, just kind of a chance for the board or people to get together and review, okay, what is it that we're doing? What have we done in the past? Okay, as long as it's going. I just, I, I'm concerned that if we pull back on the city kind of separates ourselves essentially from any oversight other than a yearly report, there is the possibility of drifting away from what the city would like to have, you know, make sure that there is continual services. Not saying that that's going to happen, but it just, it leaves that as a potential there without the city having any recourse to come back and pull it in except for a once a year.
Do we still have an agreement with them?
Yes, we still have an agreement. And part of that agreement is, I can't remember the exact words and I was looking for it, but that we continue to provide at the level that it was provided for before we had taken over. And that's not exact words, but there is still contractually an agreement there.
So maybe I think a good question would be asked, Garrett.
Yes.
When, when the city goes, Leisure Services goes through the process of setting recreational programs, working with the W, how closely do you communicate with the W in planning those, you know, activities? I mean, so when we talk about, say, swimming and there are swimming lessons available through the W, how, how close communication are we with the W in setting those programs in place?
The W takes care of it all.
Okay. And do they, and they tell you what's going on or they just?
They do from time to time.
I mean, so if we have
We know what's going on.
If we wanted to, you know, change or make improvements somewhere, would we have the opportunity to say, hey, we'd like more of these or less of these or different of these? To what extent do we like consult with the W on those?
Right. I mean, we'd be able to sit down and talk about it. We wouldn't, you know, it's not, hey, we want this, so now they're going to do it.
Right.
But yeah, we definitely have that ability to sit down and talk to them about it.
And right now, I believe we're only getting annual reports, even, I mean, right?
Correct.
I mean, we're not
Councils only get
Council, yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, that's the same.
The phone.
I was gonna say, and I do want to point out that this did go to the Leisure Services Commission twice actually, because there was a line added. Originally, the line on page four, in addition at the request of the city council, that no more than once per calendar year, the college will provide the same overview report noted above to the city council. That was not in the original changes. So that was written in. It went to the Leisure Services Commission again. And Leisure Services Commission had, you know, absolutely no problem with either one of those when it went to that.
So was a unanimous vote on the Leisure Services?
It was.
I guess when I looked at that, that's kind of the way I looked at it, was we should not be managing the programs for them. That's Leisure Services. So to me, I would be comfortable with an annual report that says, here are some of the numbers, here's the impact we're having. But I would expect throughout the year, if there are some gaps developing that Leisure Services or the public would make us aware of that and we could ask questions. And I'm assuming there's nothing saying that we can't sit down and talk about
But does that line, no more than once a year, calendar year?
For the report, I didn't read that to say that that precluded us from sitting down any other thing for the calendar year, so.
Well, and that's city council, not Leisure Services. I mean, Leisure Services can meet with them as, as often as need be.
Well, except the agreement has just an annual report to Leisure Services. That's the only contact that's in the agreement between the W and Leisure Services.
But only as far as a report is concerned right now?
Well, but there's nothing else in the agreement that I saw in, and I thought I looked through here pretty carefully, that requires or provides for any kind of coordination or consultation with Leisure Services. And that's what concerned me. The part of the agreement that you were talking to here is in Section 3, says the college agrees to provide recreation programs similar to and at least as extensive as the current programming provided by the city as further detailed in Exhibit B attached here too, which I didn't see. Provided nothing shall be interpreted to require the college to provide any particular program if because of inadequate participation, increased costs, or otherwise the program cannot be, cannot be provided. I mean, you know, I, I trust you guys that you're going to do what you, or say you're going to do, which you have been doing for the last however many years the W has been open. But I just feel as a city council, we have a responsibility to our citizens to make sure that there is some kind of oversight on the city's part with what it is that you are doing more than just an annual report. So I guess I would like something in here that says that you are, that you may consult and coordinate or Leisure Services may consult and coordinate with, with the W's part of this agreement. I don't think that would obligate you to do anything, but it would give Leisure Services the ability to contact with you and say, hey, you know, here's some things that we'd like you to consider adding or some things that we don't think are necessary.
Certainly. And we'd be happy to add that kind of language. I mean, I guess really under today's environment, the advisory group, really, or the advisory committee, that's all they are, is an advisory committee.
Yeah, and I can see getting rid of the advisory committee. I think they have their own
And even that, they provide feedback, but then the W and Sheila will still, still can make decisions that might even be counter to the advisory committee.
Right. And I don't intend, I wouldn't intend for you to, for this agreement to tie your hands that there's something the city dictates to you that you are then going to have to do. But I think since the city's prohibited from having our own recreation programs under this agreement, that the only outlet that we have is to recommend or to have oversight on the programs that the W is, is doing. I guess I'd like that language a little bit stronger.
Sure. And so if we could be, you know, a little bit more open about it as opposed to having it court, required quarterly meetings or something like that, like more like as needed or whatever.
As needed.
We'd be happy to
As requested by Leisure Services or something.
There you go, perfect.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah. Because otherwise, there's a quarterly meeting and now we're just meeting to meet.
Yeah.
It seems somewhat silly, so.
I agree.
I don't think the council needs to get into trying to micromanage what goes on up there. And actually, there were only two members out of the five or seven members of that advisory board committee from, from the city. So it was, it was not a, you know, trying to control what was going on. But just, the financial commitment, as we've done in other places, you know, the financial commitment by the city is directly expired, I think, where the utilities has one or two more payments left. So if anyone should be on that, you know, be concerned, it would be them as to how their money is being spent. But no, it's just a, one of those commissions that I felt had run its course and that's why I instituted the action to dissolve any direct link with the advisory, is the advisory report, so.
Could we, excuse me, could we add something along the lines of, after, in Section 6, after the first sentence, at the, at the request of Leisure Services Commission, the college will meet with such commission? Or I don't know how you, if you'd rather have us go back and bring it back or?
No, I think we, no.
You're in Section 6?
Yes.
If I may say something, I support what, what Mayor Slash's efforts are with this. So if this is something that, you know, Warburg and Leisure Services and the rest of the council would want to table, I'll see to it that it gets on the agenda to, you know, revisit this in the efforts that are, that are noted here for amicable, you know, resolution.
Well, I think we can probably take care of this tonight, though. It's just basically changing the language there. Rather than meet, maybe consult, you know, at the request that the Leisure Services Commission, that, I don't know, this is
On an as needed basis or do you need a certain frequency?
No, no, I would think
I don't think a frequency is the
I liked your language before. It was consult and something else, Rod, that you said consult and there was another C. Confer or?
I don't remember what I said two minutes ago.
Can I interject something? I think, I think in Section 6, at the end of the crossed out part, it talks about provide advice with respect to the
Operation
Operation of the project, the fees to be charged for membership and programming on the project and the conduct of recreation programs. That's what you're asking them to consult with the Leisure Services about. So if you added
Why don't you just change the
That section
Change, that someone from Leisure Services or the Leisure Services Director?
Yeah, the Leisure Services shall provide
Will meet periodically, but not as needed.
Yeah, just Leisure Services, Leisure Services Commission shall provide advice with respect to the operation of the project, the fees to be charged for membership. I don't care really about fees and programming of the project and, and conduct of the recreation programs. So I think everything in there except fees, which I don't think Leisure Services should get involved. And we just basically add that language back in. But instead of having that responsibility to the advisory committee, that's the responsibility of Leisure Services. And we'll add that to Garrett's portfolio.
Thanks, Rod.
You're welcome.
By the way, you said consultant coordinator.
Oh, consultant coordinator. Yeah, okay. There we go. Thank you.
Okay. Is the changes, minor changes acceptable to?
I would second that amendment. Rod's making that
I think Rich and I figured out together what
Yes, and I think in Section 6, the new, the area that was scratched off, the last three lines kind of, and say that instead add Leisure Services shall provide advice with respect to the operations of the project, the fees to be charged for membership and programming at the project and conduct of the recreation programs.
Bingo.
Do we need to vote on that as an amendment?
We, we first. Yeah, we had a motion and a second on the amendment. So we should vote on the amendment.
Okay, we did have a vote, motion and second on the amendment.
Motion and second.
Okay, very good. Any other, any other, any other discussion? Polls in favor of the amendment as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Posed? Okay, now, if there's no other discussion, we'll, we'll do a pro call vote on the, on the
Resolution?
Resolution 19-199.
As amended.
As amended.
Pro call vote, please.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drakehouse?
Yes.
Chingus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 19-199, approving changes to follow the center agreement between the city and Warburg College is hereby approved. Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Resolution 19-206, a resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of not to exceed $3,500,000 hospital revenue bond, Series 2019 Waverly Health Center project. Would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-206 as read by the mayor.
Motion made, second. Council discussion?
The mayor did not include the word series and I
I'm sorry.
I'm sure that you intended to. My question is, what do we mean by series resolution? I don't understand that. Somebody explain it.
It's a bonds, oh, will you guys answer that? Bond series?
Yeah, bond series.
I don't know that series needed to be in the first part, but it did in the second part. And we should have said it's a resolution authorizing. The series is just the issuance of the bonds themselves, which are completely the hospital's responsibility. This is similar to the last item. This is just additional funding that they're using, their tactic of status, to do through a local bank to acquire more funding. Again, hospital's liability, not the city by any means. It just did account against our, our bank qualification for the year, but we are within that amount even with this. So everything is just fine.
It's kind of a bridge, bridge loan between the 35 million or whatever it is.
Very low bridge, so to speak.
Sure, Jim.
So actually, what it is, is the USDA has required not only 20% down, but they wanted to, so 20% as the responsibility of the hospital. Okay, so they, the USDA is funding 80%. The 20% is ours. Within that 20%, they wanted to know that other lenders would be willing to lend to the facility. And that's what this, that this represents, is that other lender putting money into the, into the project. Okay? And First National has been kind enough to take the lead on that and working with the other banks to make this truly a community, a community project that hopefully everyone takes part of.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
If I may, one other, one other comment. Just to clear up, I believe that the last time that we were here, yes to echo James, no taxes. Okay, no taxes. We don't get your taxes. And then more importantly, there is no extension of liability. But at the same time, I believe that last time, it may have been slightly misrepresented in the paper, that this was not a loan from the city to the hospital. Okay? None of these are loans from the city to the hospital. We are borrowing independent of the, of the city. As a reminder, we come here as a city hospital. We need to, we need the resolutions from you all. But we are separate entities. Yes, our borrowing caps co-mingle, but good relationship with the city, the utilities and the hospital to make sure that we have a strategy when borrowing and we're looking years and years out to make sure that we're not really getting in each other's way.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So I want to make sure I'm just clarifying this. So the, the loan that you're taking out, does that affect our capacity?
No.
Okay, so it, so I realize we're not on the hook for your loans, but it also does not affect our ability to borrow as well, okay?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at the timeline and the timelines marry up so that we, we don't get in the way of the projects that you guys have planned.
And we are
Does that affect your capacity, but it affects our bank qualification, which is a whole other thing to get into since our 1886, $20,000 cap. We'll cover that in budget more. So bank qualification, yes. Capacity, no. We're still within 10 million as a combined group for the year. And that's all we have to have covered for bank qualification, so.
And we are asked to approve this because the hospital is a city entity. Is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
I mean, I suppose I would compare it to the, the Waverly Senior Housing, that we're not on the hook for it. They're paying for it, but they need our permission to get that loan.
Underarm, bro.
Not actually our loan we're paying.
Well, but
They still need our
And your permission.
To pay the bills.
Pro call vote, please.
Rafi?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drakehouse?
Yes.
Chingus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Resolution 19-206, proof 7-0, authorizing loan agreement for payment not to exceed $3,500,000. Resolution 19-200, a resolution approving lease agreements between the city of Waverly and William Low, James Jansen and KNW Farms Incorporated for 2020 rental ground within the city's airport safety zone. Would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-200, approving lease agreements between the city of Waverly and William Low and James Jansen of $225 per acre and KNW Farms Incorporated at no charge due to topsoil being removed for the 2020 rental ground within the city's airport safety zone.
Second.
Motion made, the second. Council discussion, questions?
Is there any kind of provision at all for this farm land where the topsoil's been removed and replaced and all of that? Any, any provision at all for trying to rehabilitate that, that land? It was going to continue to be used as farmland? Because there are ways, I mean, you know, over time incorporating, you know, manure and, and things like that into the ground that would rehabilitate it.
In order for the farmer to actually make money, the tenant that's going to be renting, they'll have to fertilize it. They'll have to, they'll be putting crops in that will restore things into the soils. It takes a little while to build up that topsoil in order to, to get a crop. And there's different ways that, that places do that. If they take your topsoil and they're supposed to put some back, there's supposed to be some level of topsoil back on it. Sometimes you do a percentage, go start from zero or 20% to 40 to 60 to 80, just for ease. With the KNW Farms, the entire parcel that they farm or that they lease from us was, was that they lease from us was, was, had to be restored with that topsoil, and so it really isn't going to do much of a crop the next two years. But we need to have it cover cropped, and it's just as easy to put corn or beans on it and get as much as you can off of it. And so doing a free rent for a year or, and a second year, we've committed to also, based on the fact that, like I said, you could do a 20 to 40, a 60 to 80 to 100, where we're just going to do two full years and then go back to the lease amount. With Mr. Low, there's a small amount of his land that is going to be farmed this year that was actually top, the topsoil was removed from, but we reduced his acres by seven acres also, because that's where he made the, the end of the runway and the, and the bigger turnaround. So we've made, and with that little amount that Mr. Low is, is going to be down, he keeps very close GPS records on his, his, what he makes from those acres, and we'll give him a some adjustment when we determine what his yield is compared to the rest of the land around it.
And I, I have no doubt in my mind whatsoever that that land is not going to be productive and will not be productive for quite a few years, but I, and I don't have a problem with the $0 rent on that land as long as, and you've worked with these people and I haven't, but I, I just want to make sure that they understand that in exchange for that, that we would hope that they take some kind of activity toward rehabilitating the land, keeping, if they're, if they're going to plant it in, in soybeans or some other legume that'll, that will add some nutrients to the soil, or if they're planting corn, you know, that they leave the stocks, incorporate the stocks, and that they're not taking the stocks off or that kind of thing, so that over some time, we can actually get that land built up and, and, and charge a, a rent on it, which would probably be to the same people. So to a certain extent, there's a detriment to them to build up the land, because eventually we'll be charging a rent.
It would be in his best interest to do that, if he wants to get a higher yield.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that it would be better for him to get a higher yield and, and pay a little bit of rent when he gets on the snow yield and pay no rent. You're, you're probably right.
These are relatively
It seems like a fair deal.
I mean, these are relatively small amounts. If we're putting this in grass and we were trying to maintain it ourselves, we'd have a lot more cost into maintaining this safety zone. So it, we work with these, these individuals, and we have been for, for several years, and we have a good relationship, and we just have to be fair both sides.
I just wanted to thank the city staff for making a very informative agenda memorandum this time. I felt like there was lots of good information. I could figure out what was going on there, so.
Any other questions, comments about Resolution 19-200? Pro-call vote, please.
Chair?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Chingus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Resolution 19-200, approving lease agreements between the city and three leases for the airport safety zone surplus ground hereby approved. Resolution 19-201, a resolution approving professional services agreement for engineering service with, services with Hall and Hall Engineering for the Youth Ball Field Sports Complex 2020 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-201, approving the professional services agreement for engineering services with Hall and Hall Engineering of Hiawatha, Iowa, for the Youth Ball Field Sports Complex 2020 project for a not-to-exceed amount of $300,500 plus applicable reimbursable expenses estimated at $8,050.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion? Pro-call vote, please.
If I could, one quick question. Were there local firms that had an opportunity to be part of this?
We had nine proposals that were sent out, and they were to firms all over the state. I mean, it was from Mason City to Des Moines, to Hiawatha, to, I mean, anywhere. And so we did get nine responses back. The committee looked through these, got down to three to bring in for face-to-face interviews, and these were the gentlemen who were the best of the group that we had. They have an extensive background in what they've done, and they were one of the few that has built a miracle field, and they've actually built three. So they have everything we're going to need more. So we gave the opportunity to anybody that wanted to bid. Some chose not to, and again, we did get nine proposals back.
And then we had any follow-up conversation with the local firms that weren't selected?
Not sure if we've reached out yet, or
My only reason for asking is, I don't want to see history repeat itself, and I know when Champions Ridge, early on in their project, had to pick a firm to help with the design, local firms were involved in that, were not selected, and I think over time, that caused friction that may have played against Champions Ridge, so I just hate to see that carried forward into the, the project this way. So I would highly encourage someone to circle back and explain why.
I'm not sure what local firms didn't bid. I'm not sure what local would be, firms from Waverly itself, or
And I can speak to you afterwards.
Sure.
It's, again, my understanding was that there were folks locally that were supplying some of the ideas that helped shape the solution for
Design materials?
Yeah, the schematics that we looked at.
Right.
And not having them chosen to go forward, I think they just need to
They didn't send
Have a clear understanding of why, if they haven't already.
No, I understand what you're saying. Yep, that's all squared away. We've had those discussions and no issue at all.
I think one firm is, will be involved, particularly with the vertical structure, more than the, than the diamonds themselves, because that's so, so specialized, but more so than we realized.
I felt like the, you know, when, when we listened to the presentations of the three firms that were the top three, they were certainly using the design materials from that local company, and were very respectful about their role in the process. And, and I think that the three firms that we interviewed really separated themselves with the materials they sent, the thought they put into our project, and the realistic answers they gave us about our bazillion questions that we asked them. This, this firm, Hall and Hall, I think has done, they've done some pretty impressive projects of various sizes for cities, for school districts, and they, I think, will be very flexible for us to work with and very approachable. And like James said, they, they have experience, especially with the miracle fields, but also with just the difficulties that come up with weather and with finding contractors. And, and as you can see from the proposal, you know, they'll be with us through the whole, especially the initial couple of phases, so. Remind me again, please, what the general, I know when Jeremy Langner gave his last presentation, I believe he outlined some costs in a general way in terms of how much fundraising would need to be done, but I don't recall that figure, or am I not remembering that correctly?
No, and that's part of what we're wanting to do here, is to get them on board, so we can actually start to determine some of the various items from various grades that you need to figure out what kind of aggregate we want to use to be on these fencing or netting. All of that has a price tag to it. So our goal, when we get them on board, is to then meet with ball groups, et cetera, and possibly some council staff. What do we want this to look like in the end? What does that cost look like? What can we contribute, we believe, to the city? What does fundraising mean? So he had an idea ahead of time. We're going to fine-tune that greatly with these guys. We can tell them what we want, and they can get us right down to linear foot, how much it is per fence. They've done enough of these. We'll have that quickly. And that's our goal when we get closer to January, is to have a lot of information for budget, to be able to determine what is this going to look like.
That will be really important, I think, because, you know, as, as we know, these projects line up where, whether it's a bridge, or whether it's ball fields, or, you know, whatever it is, and the size of project, you end up spending $200,000 or $300,000 that may or may not, in the end, vote, depending upon the rest of the information, be retrieved, be recoupable. And so I think the faster we know those breakouts to make a good decision, final decision about the ball diamonds will be really important.
Yeah, we're going to try and communicate the next week or so with them, with all the information they need as far as alternatives and preferences, so they can then start to put together what does that look like? Whether it's irrigated, the sewer water, all that type of thing. We're looking at wells, everything. And once we've checked all those off, they can now put pencil and paper and say, this is what it's going to cost. So a lot of what we saw early on, you begin to have estimates of what rough grade would be down to the inch or two. Then you have to skin each of these fields down to the micro inch to make sure this thing is perfect, and each of those takes a bit of money and a bit of doing. Specialized firms do that. You just don't, contrary to what some people have thought, you don't get your farmers out there and just graded away and put grass down. It doesn't work like that. And you know, the, all the complexes that we saw from all of the engineering firms that have done this, they use those firms to specialize the grading to make it correct, or it's not going to work. Your fields won't drain, your baseball paths will not run smooth. It just doesn't work like that. It is a specialized way of doing it, so. All that adds up, and I think we have a tremendous amount of knowledge, more talking to staff and myself after reading nine proposals than we ever did before, what this actually takes. And I think a lot of people have misconceptions based on just, well, it seems so easy, well, let's do it. Read through engineering proposals and see exactly what it takes to build a complex. It's a much different animal than most people will believe.
We couldn't just get Kevin Costner to come in.
If you build it, he will come.
It might be cheaper to get him here than what this might be. It's not going to net you the same result, so.
Hasn't been in too many movies lately.
No, no, he's not. But no, that, it was an education to get to this point, to understand exactly what it's going to take now. So we're confident in this group, and I think they'll do a good job for us.
But we need to know the rest of the story, I guess, is what I'm saying, is I think we're counselled to have, you know, confidence in, you know, making a decision like this. I think, I think we have to feel like we also will have the rest of the story pretty quickly to, to, to determine.
We'll have it as quick as we can have it.
Yeah.
Full Paul Harvey, the whole thing. We'll keep the rest of it to you, I promise. That's a radio now, it's for youngsters that don't know Paul Harvey. Rest of the story, ask your parents, your parents, parents will tell you what it was. No, we will have it as soon as possible. Our goal is to have it in January for budgets, so we have something solid to go off of. They've given us some ballparks, but we want a lot more of a fine-tuned issuance now that we know the alternates that we want to put into it.
Because the other thing you realize is the ballpark numbers, no pun intended, are wide. So from one engineering firm to the other, the estimates we got on the project were, what, $5 million difference?
It could've been.
And so I think that
Because if you really want to force this to be done at a certain date, you're going to pay a premium.
Yeah.
If you don't allow for reasonable time,
For weather.
Especially with the wet weather in the fall, spring, you have contractors that are available, all the way down from the lime aggregate to the turf. That's a very wide range field by field. It's not really determines, you know, what the final price is going to be by what these options are that are going to be considered and then voted on by its groups, to what do they really want? We don't want to go in with the cheapest possible and the most expensive and have all these options around. They want to go in with what they're going to need to play, what's reasonable, and that's what we want to shoot for. Otherwise, we'll never get anywhere with trying to get an actual fundraising effort. But forward, we'll still be debating on, well, that sounds expensive, let's go the cheap route here, the high route here. We don't want to get into that mix of 4,000 options. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to move forward, and that's what the project looks like. So again, we'll have that in January is our goal, the more fine-tuned numbers, and then we can focus on what the city can provide and what fundraising will need to be, grant work, et cetera.
And I think they're ready to do that. The commission is ready and enthusiastic and, I think, realistic.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Now we'll go for a pro-call vote.
Watson?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Chingus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Resolution 19-201, approving a professional services agreement with Hall and Hall Engineering for the Youth Ball Field Sports Complex hereby approved 7-0. Resolution 19-202, a resolution approving the agreement with ATC Group Services for three additional soil borings at the Waverly, at the Youth Ball Field Sports Complex 2020 project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 19-202, approving the agreement with ATC Group Services of Waterloo, Iowa, for three additional soil borings at the Youth Ball Field Sports Complex 2020 project for an estimated cost of $4,700.
Second.
Motion made, second. Motion made, second. Council discussion?
Mike, could you explain where exactly they're going to take these additional ones? I wasn't sure what all the numbers meant.
Well, you could, it's really, it's really hard to see that, where it's done. It's like black text on, like, in the middle of the field.
Oh, okay, I see it.
It looks like there's one, like, in the, I don't know, building.
With the batting cages.
In the middle of the building?
Is that batting cages? Okay. And then there's one in the middle of the parking lot of the south.
Which is where the top of that hill sits.
Right. And then there's another one at the other concession stand on the, on the right side.
Press box on the right.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
They're really hard to see.
But they're going to intricate to know what are we dealing with with those soil conditions? And again, that hilltop, right dead center, how far does that go down? So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Just you walking on it yourself.
I think that's the shortest explanation you've ever given.
It's our Christmas gift. Horrified.
Any other council questions, discussion?
I hope not.
Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 202, approving agreement for three additional soil borings at Sport Youth Soft Ball Field Complex hereby approved. Resolution 19 dash 203, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with Farnsworth Group Incorporated, formerly known as Design Alliance Incorporated, for final design and construction services for the Public Services Center for Operations and Disaster Response North Edition Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution 19 dash 203, approving the professional services agreement with Farnsworth Group Incorporated, formerly known as Design Alliance Incorporated, for final design and construction services for the Public Services Center for Operations and Disaster Response North Edition Project for a not-to-exceed amount of $231,250 plus applicable reimbursable expenses.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion? Mike, it's like he has a presentation.
I've got extra time now.
All averages out in the end.
Okay, so, to let you know what's going on, a year ago when we went through budget, we talked about the next, or the last phase of the public services facility, and this would span three fiscal years. And so, what we looked at doing is programming the design in this current year, which is 1920, and that it would be bid about a year from now, and work would start in April of 2001, which gets you into the 2021, and it would finish up in like November 21, which puts you into the 21, 22 fiscal year. So, projects like this take multiple fiscal years to, to work through. And so, we've been setting aside money into a reserve account in anticipation of this project. One of the things that is adding some concern for us going forward is, as part of the wastewater treatment project, in order to meet some setback requirements for the new treatment process, we're going to lose this 3,400 square foot storage building that is used by line maintenance to store the sewer jet machine, as well as pumps and other equipment and resources. So, we, we want to proceed with the design at this point. We know that there are some fiscal constraints going forward that we have to work through. More of that information is going to be shared at budget time as we are putting together the 2021 budgets. But we think that there may be a path forward, and we want to initiate the design. But in the event that come December of next year, we have fiscal constraints, we could delay bidding the project, and, but we would have the plans complete, ready to roll, and we'd have a much, much better idea of what those projected costs are going to be to complete this project.
And once you get plans like that, how long are they good for, basically?
Well...
I mean, occasionally, you might have to make minor adjustments, I suppose.
That's right. So, with a project like this, you would want to go back and you'd have to redo your specs to, for the bid letting, so you're setting your public hearing dates, you're doing those types of things, and getting the specs so that they line up with the bid letting process. Otherwise, you're going to be checking building code requirements to make sure that nothing has changed on the electrical, mechanical, and building side of your, your project. Otherwise, you should be able to move forward with it pretty quick. That, that's the intent.
Is there any place else to store that equipment that's in that building that's going to be demolished?
So, our plan is, because even if everything goes forward, this would not be complete until November of 2001, and this would be torn down probably in April of 2001. So, those are the challenges. So, we, yes, we do need interim storage. And so, what we're looking at was utilizing the south end of the recycling center. It's not the public portion of, of the building, it's, it's been used for, for other types of storage. We used to have our multi-bid recycling truck in there, and we, we had some other storage when we were using a different collection system and process on the curbside recycling. So, we do have a space available, but we see it more as a short-term solution, not a long-term solution.
Mike, just a point of interest, this building that has to be taken down, is there anything, and is the building reusable? Are the materials reusable, or is that going to be a loss?
I think it's, it's going to be a loss. It, it's basically a pole building, machine shed type building that, it'd be very tough to try to, to reuse and locate. We, we will investigate it, but I don't want to give any, any promises at this point.
Just trying to be a good steward here.
Okay, any other questions, comments? To the council for Mike. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
I did want to, not, didn't have really a question for Mike, but I'd like to kind of put in again, I've had, had this comment or request in the past, but I still would like to consider naming the operations center and emergency response center after former councilman Gary Borum. I put that in, and with, with Dan going off the council, he's kind of the last one with me that's had the opportunity, the honor to serve with Gary, and that was really a passion area of his, and I just think that would be a, a fitting kind of tribute to Gary to, to have that center after him.
I totally agree.
Okay. We can certainly discuss that once we get this completed, so that it's not first phase or second phase.
It's not necessarily part of this part, it's...
Because that room's already there and operational, which is...
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 203, approving professional services agreement with the Farnsworth Group Incorporated, the Public Services Center, is hereby approved. Resolution 19 dash 204, resolution approving the Waverly Municipal Airport's Federal Aviation Administration five-year capital improvement plan for federal fiscal years 2021 through 2025. Entertain a motion.
I would move approval of resolution 19 204, approving the Waverly Municipal Airport's Federal Aviation Administration five-year capital improvement plan for federal fiscal years 2021 to 2025.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion? Mike, do you have some things that you...
As, this is something that we do annually, this does not commit the city to doing any project, but is a planning tool used by the state of Iowa and the Federal Aviation Administration, so they kind of know what, what local agencies are looking at towards the future. Again, they know it doesn't commit anyone to doing anything, it doesn't commit the Federal Aviation to funding it. So, it is simply used as a, as a planning tool for the local agency, for the state, and the Federal Aviation Administration.
Questions, comments, council?
But as I recall, if it's not on here, we can't do it.
You have to go back and amend it and resubmit. The good thing is, we do it every year, so, so we typically don't have issues. Things do get shifted around, again, we, we update it every year, and some things get moved up, some things get moved back, or added, or taken off.
Yep, we've done that multiple times. Years I've been on the Airport Commission, representative watching it, Chris has been there too, where we've said, okay, we'll push this a year and move this up, and, yeah.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 204, approving the Waverly Municipal Airport's five-year capital improvement plan is hereby approved. Resolution 19 dash 205, a resolution approving the professional services agreement for engineering services with Snyder and Associates Incorporated for the Traffic Study 2020 Project. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19 dash 205, approving the professional services agreement for engineering services with Snyder and Associates Incorporated of Ankeny, Iowa, for the Traffic Study 2020 Project for not to exceed via $158,100.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion, questions?
If I may, I'll, again, I'll try to make this quick, but our budget did support, let me back up, we went through a consultant selection process, there was five consultants that we, we interviewed, that we got proposals from, we narrowed it down to three, and invited them in for an interview, and through that selection process, it was a unanimous decision of the, of the selection team to go with Snyder and Associates. One thing that we, we did do is we had enough within the budget to add a few more intersections in there from what was originally reviewed with the city council. So, additional intersections was 20th Street and West Bremer, and Second Avenue and Fifth, excuse me, Eighth Street and Second Avenue Southwest. And then, the entire Fifth Avenue corridor, we identified the five major intersections along Fifth Avenue Northwest. It's a 20th Street, 12th Street, Fifth Street, Fourth Street, and First Street. So, we got those in there for counts. What we're looking at getting out of this is to establish a new baseline for traffic throughout the community, turning movements, time of day, so that we're hitting, when are the peak hours, when are the times that are of greatest concern for these corridors? One of the things that's very important to me is that we inventory all of our traffic signal hardware. We need to know the age, the condition, what we are capable of doing with the controllers, and at each of the 15 signalizing intersections. Some of this infrastructure is 40 years old, some of it is only maybe five years old. So, we need to have a really good handle on that, and that will be cataloged in the report. The next thing then is to, with that traffic data that we gather, is how do we optimize and improve, if possible, the flow of traffic along our major corridors? So, we, we think of that as being Bremer Avenue, Fourth Street Southwest, and the Cedar River Parkway Corridor. So, if there are opportunities to improve and enhance the flow of traffic through there, will the hardware at these traffic signals support those types of changes? If not, then we will develop a capital improvement plan to be able to address those issues. And what we'll look at is, if there's a small improvement but a big cost, probably not something we're going to recommend. But if we have, you know, reasonable cost with a significant benefit, certainly we'll be presenting those to the council for consideration.
Mike, what were the three areas that you're adding? The Fifth Avenue Northwest Corridor, 20th Street Northwest, and West Bremer, and what was the third one? That you have enough money to add those?
Well, then, the entire corridor...
By the hospital.
And then, and then there were two other locations, there was 20th Street and West Bremer was at it, and then Second Avenue and Eighth Street by the hospital.
Which we've talked about before on multiple occasions.
So, I was part of the selection process, and one of the things I think we need to point out is that this traffic study is not only for vehicular traffic, it is, also includes pedestrians and bicycles. So, we will be able to keep those counts as well. Finally, I do want to point out that the purpose of this is not a traffic study comparing going back to four lanes. That is not part of the study. However, it should close the circle and confirm the previous study. There's the previous study where if we made the conversion from four lanes to three lanes, how that would look, this should provide confirmation of those predictions. So, it's kind of when you do a study saying, we predict this will happen when you go to three lanes, this should provide the opportunity to confirm that study.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Resolution 19 dash 205, approving professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for Traffic Study 2020 is hereby approved. Second reading of ordinance 1069, an ordinance amending chapter 100, sections 100.5.02, 100.6.02, 100.68.02, 100.7.02, 100.8.02, 100.9.02, 100.12.02, 100.13.03, 100.16.03, 100.18.03, and 100.28 of the Waverly Municipal Code amending the special provisional uses application process to comply with the Iowa Code by making the Board of Adjustment the body that issues special provisional use permits. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 19...
Second reading.
Oh, sorry, ordinance 1069 and supporting doc, well, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion?
I just want to say, I think it's fitting as one of your final mayoral announcements that you had to read all those. And you did it correctly.
You did it quite well, yes.
It's awesome.
Exactly.
As long as I had my pointer, I could follow. Roll call vote, please.
Rothie?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 1069, an ordinance amending chapter 100 of the Waverly City Code is hereby approved.
And Pete is happy.
Third and final reading of ordinance 1068, an ordinance adopting the city code of the
city of Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1068.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion? Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chair?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Ordinance 1068, third and final reading of ordinance 1068, adopting the city code for the city of Waverly, Iowa hereby approved. Approval of the mayoral appointments, I would entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the following mayoral appointments. Mike Scher is replacing Chris Glazier on the Airport Commission for a term ending May 1st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion?
Are you sure you want to do it, Mike?
I think I'm going to recuse myself.
No, Mike was, Mike was very gracious when I asked him if he would consider doing that. All those in favor of Mike Scher replacing Chris Glazier on the Airport Commission, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Mike is hereby approved to be on the Airport Commission starting in January. Reports from boards and commissions, monthly financials, November 2019, received in the record. Senior center calendar, December 2019, received in the record. Time for staff updates.
I think they're exhausted, Mayor, I don't think yet. I think we're good.
City council comments?
I just want to say what a pleasure it's been to serve with the outgoing council members and the mayor. I've learned a lot, and we've had very good discussions, and I appreciate everyone's sense of humor and dedication to the city. So, I wish y'all the best, and thank you very much for serving alongside us.
Thank you. I would like to echo those thoughts. It's, it's been a pleasure serving the last couple, four years with Mike and Edie, and actually a little longer with Edie, because I was a liaison on planning and zoning while she was on planning and zoning, so I've gotten to work with her for a number of years. So, I would echo Hank's comments about that, always well thought out, and a leader on both that board and on the council here. And Dan, having been the longest service, next, longest-serving member on the council with me, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
And Dean, it's been an honor working with you for a couple of years.
Thank you.
Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to put in a good word for one of my favorite people, which happens to be Martin Luther, actually. For some reason.
For some reason.
Martin Luther had something to say about, he had a couple sentences that he had to say about what it means, what daily bread means of all things, and as in, give us this day our daily bread. And answering the question, what that means, he said, well, it means things like food, clothing, your family, good friends, the good weather, and then he slides in, and good government. And I just want to say, I think Waverly has, has and has had really good government, and I've been honored to be on the council the last four years, especially enjoy the last two years, appreciate the collegiality, and I want to wish the members on council the very best in the year to come, facing all the challenges that will be there.
I'd like to take a minute or two also, just to express some gratitude, given that this is the last meeting, as we pointed out, for some of us. My first word of thanks goes to the citizens of Waverly who've placed their trust in me for the last six years, nearly two terms. I've appreciated and learned from your regular contact with me, and I couldn't have done this job without you citizens. Waverly is blessed with citizens who love their community and who want to contribute to it. I also want to thank this council, just as some of my colleagues have already done, your thoughtfulness, your civility, your hard work as fellow council members goes, as far as I'm concerned, unprecedented in my experience and tenure on the council. And above all, despite differing opinions sometimes on individual issues, I valued your heartfelt commitment to the greater good of, of Waverly. I also want to express my thanks to the mayor, who has respected the council's work and honored the process of democratic governance, even when he has not personally agreed with a particular council decision, or when he has been the target of undue bullying. Thank you, Mayor Soash, for leading with integrity. You have a deep commitment to this community. I also want to thank city staff, who are among the best I've seen in the region. Now, not that I know a ton about this, but I do try to look around a little bit. At every level, from those who work directly with delivering city services to the administration and everything in between, you city staff are highly competent and incredibly dedicated, so thank you. It's been a pleasure, a real pleasure, working with you. So, finally, I also just want to reiterate again, it's been a real privilege to serve the citizens of Waverly. I'm proud of the many accomplishments I've been able to be a small part of during my six years serving as at-large councilperson and mayor pro temp. The work of our citizens, the council, the mayor, and the city staff combined to make Waverly a wonderful place, one that many, many, many other small cities look up to. We have a progressive community that offers a quality of life for those of us who live and work here that's not matched by many other places. And even our visitors will marvel at what a little gem we have here in Waverly. So, wishing all of this and more for the future of Waverly. Waverly a wonderful place, one that many, many, many other small cities look up to. We have a progressive community that offers a quality of life for those of us who live and work here that's not matched by many other places. And even our visitors will marvel at what a little gem we have here in Waverly. So wishing all of this and more for the future of Waverly, I thank you again for having had the opportunity and privilege of serving you.
Very good, thank you, Edie.
I guess I'll jump in here. Over the last month or two, I've had a lot of people ask me, are you looking forward to your last meeting? And in some respects, I am, but it is a hard night. My first opportunity to interact with this council was about 30 years ago as a firefighter. I stood up and gave some information about how the volunteers worked within the community at the time when the city was downsizing the paid fire department. Since then, I have worked with many, many dedicated people, multiple mayors, three city administrators, several councils, and regardless of what goes on in this community, when something needs to be done, it gets done right and it gets done by people that are committed to making Waverly better. And please do not read anything into these comments, they are just my perception of the reality that we work in now. Eight years ago, when I joined the department or the council, it was not uncommon for citizens to call me and have telephone conversations. It was not uncommon to meet for coffee and talk about the difference opinions that we had. Over the last eight years, it's almost impossible to get someone to call you. If they call you, all they're concerned about is sharing their opinion and telling you how uneducated you are. I found even when I tried to meet with them for coffee, it becomes a situation where instead of realizing that we're all going to have different opinions on the data and our perspective on life, and again, I think this is larger than the city of Waverly, all of a sudden, we feel we need to prove our opinion is right. I thoroughly enjoy working with the city staff, again echoing some of the comments, those that sit in this chamber. I don't know that I could do your job. It's hard enough to have one boss at Keanu Mutual, let alone having seven that sit over here thinking their opinion is right, but then you walk out and you have 10,000 people in the community whose opinion is also right. So I applaud your dedication and your perseverance and that goes down to the city staff that deal with the public on a daily basis on the snow routes, the garbage routes, those type of things. We must be doing something right. We attract good people that do good jobs. For those citizens that do take the time to call and talk, I would encourage you to do more of that. The only way good things happen is to have conversations and you cannot have conversations on social media. Social media, in my perspective, is a one-sided conversation. Please, please, pick up the phone, take the time to educate yourself on what happens in this community. Things are too complicated to take your source of information from social media. Share your opinions, but realize it's one of 10,000 opinions. It doesn't have to be right, it doesn't have to be wrong, it's just an opinion and as a group, we will find the right solution. So again, that's the contrast I've seen in my eight years here, is we used to talk as a community, now we talk at each other without listening and having a conversation and I certainly hope going forward, that will change.
Okay, any other council comments?
Well, I would like to invite anyone, citizens or outgoing city council members, to join me for a beer at the Wooden Foot and have a conversation about anything going on in the city. I'd welcome anyone to join me.
I was going to ask where you were going.
Adam, as guest councilperson, do you have any comments that you'd like to share with the?
Just equally, I think everybody that's, you know, been here has brought great things to the table, though. Don't, don't anybody tell you any otherwise because it is a true, true statement from your counterparts that sit beside you and going forward and obviously, but there is a mention from Councilman Kangas about Gary Borum and his contributions and still recognizing those things and you'll have those things too. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Brings us to the mayor's comments. First of all, I would like to extend congratulations to Jory Wade Booth and the WSR 10-member dance team for their efforts at the state championships in Des Moines. I've watched some of those competitions on TV and I, you know, it's, it's an exercise program, it looks like, but they placed first in the class six hip hop, second in the class 11 pom, whatever that is, and, but they were also awarded awards for outstanding community service and academic excellence. So we didn't get it in time, catch it in time, or the timing is wrong, or we would try to have had them here for, for the meeting tonight. Again, this is my last meeting, obviously, and I echo so many of the comments that the outgoing council people have said. It's been a privilege to serve for the citizens of Waverly. Two years ago, when I got elected, I wasn't sure what was going to happen. I just knew that I had stuck my neck out, so to speak, and the citizens responded with trusting me to lead, lead this community as, in a way that I saw fit. Duties are small, people said, you know, it's got to be a thankless job, but there are rewards out here. First of all, seven, as I've stated time and time again, seven very intelligent people on either side of me split and I don't have to do their work. It's a kind of a blessing that I don't, typically don't necessarily have to do all the research, even though I do, so that I know what's going on. So there's that and I wish the incoming mayor and council well, wishes well, but James has told me, it's different times, it's my meeting, I'm going to break protocol maybe a little bit, but I have a duty to do. Chief Purcell, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Jen, thank you. Yaret, thank you much. Mike, we've got along pretty well, in spite of what I heard early on, so.
It's Monday morning.
Yeah, Monday morning. Sarah, thank you very much for all you do up at the library.
Thank you.
Carla, city hall would not run without you and Val, I told you. Adam, Mike, it's been a pleasure. Dan, thank you. Edie, you bet. Tim, Rod.
This is Mayor.
James.
Sir.
And Bill. Not Ben Alders, it's been mine. It just felt that it was appropriate for me to publicly thank each and every one of you with at least a handshake. With that being said, I'd like to, even though it's a few days away, this is our last council meeting before Christmas, I wish all of you and the citizens of Waverly a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'd now entertain a motion for adjournment, unless there's any other comments.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say yes. We're adjourned, thank you.